First item is Phase Three Change Order Recommendation, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the change orders as presented.
I like the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on to that's me, public comments. First up is Mr. Malik.
Okay, hi, my name is Malik, I'm a parent and a community member, and I want the LGBTQ community to know, I'm not here to wage a war with you organization or memberships. I have some personal friends who are within my circle members of this organization. But what I'm here for is to come to some type of middle ground, not allowed to be steered by a certain culture, a social movement that's being integrated into our school and onto elementary age children. Over the past two weeks, as a parent and community member, I've had conversations with parents of elementary age children. It seems that the gender ideology has been pushed out to our elementary age children. We now have staff members asking these children what pronoun they want to be called. I could only envision the look a young child would have, would ask this question. These parents were very upset and they were having to battle the politicization of our schools. This trickle-down gender ideology must stop now. There may be, very well be laws in place that allow schools to teach certain topics without parental approval, but the Board of Education could put a stop to these, to these progressive policies that are haunting our schools. Aren't these gender issues something that our families should be discussing with their children? I get the feeling that some of these gender ideology issues are being pushed by certain individuals within the district. As a parent, I do not want to be deceived by our staff or administration. I want transparency to occur between school personnel and us parents. The question is, are we getting the truth? As a parent, I understand that we want our schools to be, to, our schools to moderately educate our students to flourish in a multicultural democracy, but that must be done with total transparency, parental involvement, and no secrecy. This burden lies with the parents. Children are in the care and custody of parents. As a parent, I take offense to the fact that the Board of Ed Administration think that they can do a better job than me as a parent when it comes to life-determining decisions regarding gender ideology. Parents receive phone calls from their nurse when a child may need some Tylenol. Why wouldn't the same courtesy be forwarded to parents in, in regard to gender ideology? This pandering must stop now. In closing, as a parent, I'm asking all educational stakeholders to not hide from parents the political ideology children are being taught. Please reach out to parents or let us establish a stakeholder committee where we can sit around a table and put everything on that table before any decision is finalized with how this curriculum is going to be taught in our schools. It seems to me that we need to teach these young children the three Rs and not indoctrinate, indoctrinate our children with these progressive policies that are part of our society today. Give these children a chance to grow and understand the world around them before we teach these policies. More and more parents are pulling their children from public schools and placing them in private schools. This is not a trend we want to see here at Ronda Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Malik.
Um, next up is Nicole Knapp. Thank you. Did I say that correctly?
Yeah, okay, great. Um, my name is Nicole Knapp, I'm a parent of two children in the school district. Um, I did also send this letter via email and would like it entered into the minutes for tonight's meeting. I did get confirmation that it was received. Um, okay, so members of the board, um, when I found out the school district was going to be outsourcing food services this year, I was hopeful there would be better food choices than the 2021, 2022 post-COVID school year. Menus came home, there were some new choices, which I was happy about, due to the fact that my children love trying new flavors. I'm aware there was a slight setback in the beginning of the year since the cafeteria and kitchen in the intermediate school were still waiting on inspections. But as I understand it, the cafeteria is now open. A few times, my children have decided they wanted to buy lunch, the listing on the menu did not reflect what was being served in the cafeteria. I've heard several other parents mention this discrepancy, even over in the high school, and also that food is not appetizing. On the recent half-day of school on October fourteenth, um, 2022, the menu displayed waffles as a choice. My children instead stated they were served peanut butter and jelly sandwiches on ones that were inedible and hardly had any ingredients on them. My children said they were gross, and I was shocked to find out they were charged the price of full lunch at three dollars. A friend and local farmer and business owner in our district made a great point stating, quote, "Considering where we live, the district should be utilizing more farm-fresh food for, for school lunches." I wholeheartedly agree with this statement and think it's a missed opportunity to provide our children with healthier, less processed, and more varied food choices with these resources at our fingertips. We live in a rural community with tons of farms. The Ronda Valley School District has children coming from many different backgrounds attending this school. For some, bringing lunch from home is not an option. School is a place where they should be able to get a nutritious and delicious meal if they so choose. For some children, it's not a choice and this is the only meal they get during the day, so why not make it actually count? I had another friend who expressed concerns about peanut butter and jelly like constantly being offered as an option, and her child has a peanut allergy, you're flooding the school with peanuts. You know, there, there are other options and other routes we can go. Um, I eagerly await the board and the district's response to this issue because I feel like it could be an easy issue to resolve. Um, I also had a couple of friends mention Pizza Fridays, which has been something that has been missed by a lot of students, something to look forward to during the weekend. I know my children definitely did, especially when they were younger. Um, why can't we have that? Um, you know, as taxpayers in the school district, we pay for these services. Why can't we bring back Pizza Friday? Um, another issue not related to the food service, um, is inconsistent discipline within the schools. Uh, seeing this over and over and over again, punishments don't, don't seem to match the crime, let's say. Um, and just looking for more consistency in that, why, you know, a child who maybe has questions is getting punished and is told they're talking back to a teacher? Kids are just being expected to, you know, give respect to the teacher without actually receiving it themselves? I think it's a two-way street. Um, and then, um, you know, we have kids that are being denied usage of the bathroom, um, which is really concerning. I don't think any child should have to be told no when they ask to use the restroom. That is a, a basic human bodily function and necessity. Um, also, you know, when, when a teacher has been, or, or, you know, employee has been disrespectful to a child, they are not made to apologize to the child, but the child for sure is made to apologize to that individual. Like I said, it's a two-way street. You can't, you can't expect something from a child and then not return it.
Ms. Knapp, you're over your three minutes, so if you could wrap it up?
I'm, I'm at the end.
Okay.
Um, as taxpayers, we have a right to not only have our voices heard and input received, but to have action taken by the board and the district. Thank you.
Mr. Knapp?
Yes. Uh, good evening. Within the Ronda Valley School District, there are children ranging from ages nine to eighteen years old riding buses to and from school together. I find this extremely inappropriate and represents a dangerous situation for some of our younger students. There have been countless issues presented by this situation and no action has been taken, separate two-age groups while being transported to and from school. Uh, there have been high school students starting fistfights with intermediate and middle school students on the bus. High school students threatening physical harm to intermediate and middle school students. Younger students are being exposed to inappropriate language and acts of a sexual nature from high school-level students. There are high school students smoking in the back of the bus. Uh, even reports of them showing, uh, the younger students adult content videos on their cell phones. Intermediate and middle school students are still children, and they should not be exposed to any of these behaviors. They do not yet have the mental or emotional tools to cope with or fully understand what's going on. My children got off the bus a couple of weeks ago and asked me about a very specific adult subject uh, that they had heard about from the older kids on the bus. This is something that I've been trying to shield from them just because of their age, and I had to have that off their conversation. Uh, I've spoken to countless parents and school staff, including the Director of Transportation, and me and Mr. Culler had discussions about the bus. Everybody seems in agreement that these two-age groups should be, or schools should be transported separately. Uh, just because it's always been like this is not a reason to continue to fail these students. Imagine yourself at nine years old being threatened by another student as the size of an adult. That's terrifying. You wouldn't want to get back on the bus either. You'd never, you'd never see that person again. This is how these kids feel. The other issue I keep hearing about are the bus drivers. I know this is a big topic among parents and the kids, I hear about this every day. Um, there are reports of bus drivers just not stopping at bus stops, the students are standing in their driveway and just keep going. Um, they are extremely late or extremely early, so the kids aren't there anymore, not being picked up. Um, there is one driver that is telling students that she hates their parents and doesn't care about her job because she's been fired from multiple bus companies at the bus sixty-two. Um, that same bus driver also recently told the kids that her father was a serial killer and went into a very detailed story about her father in that subject matter. Um, and it came to my attention today that she told all of the kids on her bus that they were just no brakes on the bus today. Um, other than that, uh, there's instances of unsafe driving, speeding, slamming on the brakes. Uh, I know a couple of students have gotten injured, uh, hitting their heads on the windows from rough paths. Also, there is a few drivers, I think it's appropriate to park the bus down the street from the school here on this road, uh, just so that they do not hear too much of it. Uh, the biggest issue of all is they just don't seem to appear to have any control over the students on their bus. All these behaviors of the students listed are controllable, but the drivers just let it happen. All students deserve the right to travel to and from school in a safe and stress-free environment. Transporting these two schools separately would help create that environment. I understand the budget and staffing issues that this potentially creates. These kids must feel safe, well, in your care, and that is more important than any administrative issue that may arise. I'd like to thank you for your time and hope that more takes what I've said seriously and implements the changes that it does will need. Thank you.
Mr. Knapp? Rachel Lemister?
Lemister, yeah.
Lemister, I'm sorry, I tried.
Guys, hi, I'm a mom, vaccinated, I have ten-year-olds, twenty-seven, twelve-year-olds in the district. Um, unfortunately, my one ten-year-old was out with COVID, but my son was here last Thursday in school, and when I picked him up, never picked him up, but I picked him up that day, because I had COVID. He was, I, this is the email I replied.
We can't use any names.
Oh, I can't, I'm sorry, no names. First time, yeah.
Yeah, no, no.
When I picked Levi up from school on Thursday, I assumed his name was, he's usually a very happy, kind-hearted, positive ten-year-old. His exact words were, "I don't want to talk about it, I felt so uncomfortable." A woman came into my class and used hate words like retard, blacked, and gay. Before I even pulled away from the school, I asked him who the adult was and why she was saying those words. He still didn't want to talk about it. Levi's twin sister was in the class and is off with homework COVID, so she missed her birthday. I am forty-six years old, have the privilege of working with severely handicapped individuals for over twenty-five years. So my children are no stranger to the people with disabilities and the horrible names they are sometimes referred to. All three of my children have needed a goal to talk to kids that we need to talk to, stick up for the underdog. My husband, husband and I also have an extremely diverse family and friendship. We talk openly and freely in my household about everything. We don't feel the need to say things like, hey, that's Uncle Ted, that's our black aunt, my mom. We just accept everyone as they are. I understand, again, some kids don't have that privilege and aren't taught right from home. My children are, and you can ask any of their teachers they know their mother. For you to use the word blacked, retard, and gay in front of a bunch of nine- and ten-year-olds is appalling. Now, the mean kids just have more hate words to use, and the parents have to talk to their kids about the F-word, which I explained the whole weekend to my twins and my toddler that night. Um, you know, I, I fully understand. I don't want my son, who is in school for education, to have to sit through thirty minutes of feeling so uncomfortable. My husband and I do our job of teaching our children to be decent, empathetic, humane. I want to be notified of this, and I understand these topics are sensitive and need to be addressed, but the language that was used is highly inappropriate for nine and ten-year-olds. In addition, students were told to Google Matthew Shepard, which is a very disturbing and graphic crime that is horrific and should not have been a part of the grade curriculum. Um, I am not against the district trying to make acceptance and inclusion this a part of their education, but the lesson learned that day was disturbing, and the individual needs to learn a much better way of communicating with the children in our district. The kids learned you hate words that day, and unfortunately, and it's not the topic that was the issue at all. It was a harsh way, it was delivered to them and made them so uncomfortable. I feel any future lessons like this need to be handled and presented very differently so the kids can gain knowledge, understanding, instead of creating confusion. I do have emails back and forth, and eventually she said that she was unapologetic for using those terms, and that's part of her job to, um, discuss that, I can give you all the emails. But I just want to say, like, at all that weekend, I had to tell my kids, they know those were bad words, but it's for nine and ten-year-olds, they, that she's not informed, so, you know, less.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing this up.
And I can give you guys the emails or the copies.
Um, I would recommend Dr. Morgan, that we will, I'm sure that Dr. Morgan and/or his team will be in touch with all three of them, all four of the people that I have spoken so far.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Um, Susan Lennon?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, I actually came for the same reason as you, Malik, then, I've never really had a job where I spoke about. Um, just a couple of things that I've chanted, that is that I personally know students in middle school whose teachers have applied flag. No reason to.
Could you speak just a little louder?
Yeah.
Long story.
Yeah. I know that kids in the middle school, and I'm not voting seven favorite, but I'm a number, have a teacher who hangs the flag in the class. I don't think there's a reason for that, because there's questions, and again, it's for the parents to discuss. I also know Marlboro Town Elementary School has the gay, sorry, I don't think she's heard. Um, the pride, I mean, going, and the kids ask about that too. Not even just the kids that go to school there, but any kids that my parents just are walking and they see. Again, it's my job or parent's job or whoever's, and we're not being told exactly what is being taught to our children. Also, children are not born racist. You know, that's a big thing, but nobody's born racist, that is taught to them. Now, I know in Ronda, we are teaching SLE. SLE is just the nice form of CRT. And I really do not believe any of our children should be going through that and learning that, that's a parent's job. Again, most students or child is born racist, they are taught. And I believe the parents should be at least to stop it. If the teacher has an issue with it, they can walk to a parent. If not, they should not be on the street. And it would be very nice if we could get maybe, um, the detailed curriculum of what the SLE for teaching. Thank you.
And, um, Ally.
Crichlow.
Crichlow, thank you. Sorry, couldn't really use the word.
Hi, everyone. Okay, so, first I'd like to thank Nicole because she's the only reason I knew about the meeting tonight. Um, I didn't bother to look what the agenda was that you guys were talking about, I just kind of went with what Nicole had to say. I thought that she brought up some of your points and I had something to say about that, so. Um, I thought about rewriting it and leaving the curse words out and all that stuff, we'll see how it goes.
I would, I would recommend that we don't curse, you know.
I'm gonna do my best job.
Yes.
Promise.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I wanted to bring up the, uh, the fluff or no fluff and the fact that my mom worked really hard back in the day. When I went to school here, I wound up to sue for the Orton whatever program, and I ended up getting a tutor.
Orton Giant?
There you go, thanks, they taught me how to cheat real good. Um, just wanted to put that out there. Um, I could, yeah.
Cheat.
We, like, like, like it's.
It's a reading program.
I'll skip it up later.
Yeah, so this is just public comment?
Right, it's all, it's all involved.
We don't exchange, um, conversation.
Okay, so I can talk for years about generational traumas and not because I have a fancy educational degree, but just because I'm an empathetic person and I'm in love, um, I, uh, I have a hard time with the three-minute comment, but I'm gonna do my best, so I'll skip the fluff and go right to the important stuff here. It's for the bus company, I imagine the bus company does the best job that they can with the allotted money and support they are given. I imagine the bus company takes the blame for a lot of things that are not necessarily their fault alone. Regardless of the fault, the buses are a serious problem, and they have been, and we ought to put our heads together to come up with a plan to fix this hell for the children. Um, food services, uh, my comment is you are what you eat, and I think that we should run, um, like the Canadian healthcare in the food cafeteria. Um, let's put that idea into effect, um, people are so concerned about parents taking care of their children and wah-wah about how much effort they put into the ball team or that ball team. Maybe this should be a fundraising effort, um, that the parents can get involved for the school cafeteria. Um, bullying, I'd love to have a program designed to assist with this. Uh, more counselors in the school, volunteers allowed to come in and spend time with the students, like student support on steroids. Also, bullying happens at all levels, and that should be set as a standard in the school. We should not be desperate hiring staff who are not fit to work with children. Volunteers should be checked for much more than felonies. School disciplinary system, this is where I'll leave the curse word out. Um, as far as I'm concerned, it's a joke. Um, only when we fix the first three things can we start to build an action system for discipline. Let's start discipline at the top with the adults and work our way down to the poor children who are stuck cleaning up our ignorance all while trying to survive. Also, uh, the last time we were here, we talked about some pavilion that I know nothing about. Um, I wonder if there's anybody in the room that can tell me about the curries that you've been using back there? And if not, I'd love to explore.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment?
Can I just say something, because I don't think I made it clear? It was a LGBTQ push-in in my kids' class, that's what the, the word nasty or that's.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, thank you for public comment. Next up is student board members reporting. So, um, thank you for moving in, we appreciate that. And, um, Sierra, would you like to go first?
I think I'd like a little more time.
Okay.
Backward, I want to start.
Okay, Emily, and I guess it's you.
That's on me then. Um, I just have some updates, put things out of high school, um, this Thursday, again, October twenty-seventh, is the high school's college financial aid night at six p.m. in the high school library. Please come to learn all about the process. And you can join even via Zoom through a link that's sent to all high school members. Um, and then this week in, in the high school, uh, we're hosting SUNY Ollantay tomorrow during the seventh period, and the University of Rhode Island on Friday during the second period, um, as a continuation of our college resuscitation, and a better way to get more orientated with the process. Also, next Thursday, November third, the high school is having our college fair, periods five through seven in the high school library. So please come join us through student impact and interested in pursuing college. And also, just out of high school, uh, clubs are finally in full swing. It's really exciting, we have everything from math team to environmental club to the human rights club. And, um, for a more detailed list for those interested, you can find that, um, on our principal's podiums.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Okay, Sierra, was that enough time?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, good.
Emily covered lots of the bases, so the only thing I really have to update anyone on is that the prom planning for junior proms well underway, where we have lots of things put in place. We need to get, like, um, prices back, figuring out, um, deposits, but we're pretty, pretty good with that, and thanks to the funding at Homecoming, we can have, parents have a lot of help with the over one thousand dollars earned from our food at Homecoming. Great, which is highly successful.
And that is it, thank you very much. Awesome. Thank you very much. Um, okay, administrative report. Do we have any principals who would like to speak, or you, I know you guys all spoke last time, you don't have to, but I don't want to ignore you, if you want to talk.
Mrs. Vee is volunteering.
I, I see it in her expression.
Yeah. So I, I don't, um, I don't have a long report for today, but, um, this Friday, we are celebrating with our hobby, which is always a big event.
Large.
And we're excited that we chose that strategically over Monday, because it looks like we're on Monday, so I was very happy that Friday.
What time is that happening?
Uh, ten o'clock. And, uh, we, last year we expanded our room, so there's plenty of space for parents to spread out and come and watch the parade, which is really exciting. Um, we finished that off at the end of the day with our Trimmer Tree, which we started several years ago, and it's just a really great time and a great time for the community to get together. Um, this year we are doing a food drive in conjunction with that and a co-drive, so we just encourage parents that are coming to bring their donations, we're gonna try to stop the truck and see how much food we can get in there, so please be generous. Um, I also want to give a shout out to our Little Gander's, that they did a really amazing, they'll be one of the lights over the weekend, and it was just a really great time to be together with our community and, um, and, and share that event. Um, they had a really amazing season, a great, a great time to see everybody together, a big shout out to their coaches and family. Um, they're really an amazing little group. So, that's my update, that's what I've got, so thanks for coming out. Food coast, that's what we made that day.
Is Marlboro Town doing the same day?
I, I believe Marlboro Town is the same day.
Same car day?
At the same times, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
But we're doing that with real house and we're leaving it to the rain.
Why are you still there?
No, we, we, we know we want to do that, but we, we don't want rain, that, that's, uh, but it was, it's late in the afternoon, so we, we, we.
Nice, I want the house on the curries. Jessica, um, Ms. Torak, are you good?
Emily, it, just about all of it, I can talk about just a couple more updates. Um, National Appetite Society will be kicking off their feather for foods, helping out our local food pantries and also our divisions. Uh, last week had a, they'll check up the local harmonic down in Enric's, and I think that the late time it was a fun event.
Awesome, thank you. Well, thank you, administrative reports. They were great. More time, let's start with Lucy. Did I start with you last time?
I can record, since, since the last meeting, we haven't had new facilities needed yet. Just normal.
Okay, sounds good. Alex?
Yes, uh, Policy Committee met, uh, last Tuesday. We covered a couple of things, we have policies that we're gonna bring tonight to the board, uh, one for adoption and the other for, for treating. We're going to detail them if they are, at least, but we had a, a good meeting. Uh, we tabled one issue that we're gonna bring the attorney in and we want to get some, uh, feedback in that area, so.
Great.
We'll record it on that.
Thank you. Nicole?
Um, so my daughter's in fifth grade, and she had her first school dance really since before COVID, so she was in second grade, I think, the last time there was any kind of run like that. And it was so, um, oh, the kids were so excited, all of them. It was really, really nice, Ben, thank you.
It's amazing, there was so many years since the last.
I mean, really, so she was in second grade now, she's in fifth, she doesn't really remember her, her dance ever, so this was a big deal for the kids to go back to normal. So, thank you, it was an awesome event. Um, and as for the committee reports, um, for the Educational Delivery Committee, that would mean, uh, the upcoming, thank you. Upcoming, upcoming committee meeting will be on November seventeenth, we had to reschedule our overall under the schedule. Um, and at this meeting, we're gonna be talking about steps, um, that the district takes when they're adding or eliminating academic programs. Um, we're also gonna be doing a, a review of our state test. Um, we're also gonna be doing a uh a review of our state test scores.
Great.
Please join us for that meeting. It's a public meeting and we encourage you to come out.
That's fantastic, thank you. Megan?
I do not have a committee update, but I did wanna thank the high school uh for their college, I don't know, informational meeting. I only saw half of it, um, but uh, cause I was at the policy meeting, but it was very informative. And if you know if that is gonna be posted online?
Oh, we posted on the website, the working.
Excellent, it was great, really, thank you.
It's going through a little bit editing, so you can just see like the presentation and not the beginning.
Yeah, it was, it was great, thank you.
That's it. Awesome. Dean?
Um, as Lucy said, we uh, we did not have a meeting last week, so, you know. But I do wanna echo that my daughter did have a great, have a great time at the uh dance and it's the first time since uh Marltown, so she had a great time.
Awesome.
Good getting back.
Love it. Christine?
Our October health and wellness meeting got canceled or reversed. We're actually having a phone conversation tomorrow at 8:00 AM to discuss our meeting schedule, cause we've kinda got them a little off the culture.
Perfect. Thank you. Great. Carolyn?
Um, we have, first, I have an update on some of our musicians. We had nine students from the high school recognized and be accepted into area all-state this year.
Great.
Uh, they are split between the symphonic band and the symphonic orchestra. That concert um is being held on November 19th. Um, it's, I, as we get closer, the, the board meeting closer to that, I will um officially recognize all the students. Um, I just don't know how to say all of their last names, and I'd like to kinda check on that first before I butcher that. So, but there are nine uh students ranging from ninth grade all the way to 12th grade that are in there.
Um, for our athletic update, um, our field hockey team won the Mahal's championship last Thursday. Beating Red Hook five to zero, going back to back with last year's Mahal championships. Tonight, they are currently playing right now versus Antioch. Are we winning?
Um, I, I think we, we.
They were when we came in too.
We were, we were, I don't know what the final is, but we, we were. Um, this Thursday night, we are actually, Rondau is hosting the finals. The class A sectional finals will be at four o'clock here. It'll be Kingston versus Pine Bush. And the class C sectionals finals will be at six o'clock and we're hoping that it's Rondau versus uh whoever won earlier today, Red Hook or Pine Plains, and I don't know what that, that was tied when I came in, so I'm not sure who the winner of that uh contest was. Um, we will also be hosting on Sunday, November 6th at noon, the class A winner and the class C winner at two o'clock. Again, hopefully us here at the school. Varsity Boys Golf uh won their division during the season varsity boys golf and they finished second place in the Mahal team championships. Uh, they had three players advanced to sectionals in the spring. Hudson Paley, Poit, Poit, Poitkai, Lou.
Loukai.
Thank you. Dominic, GMI?
Jemay.
Thank you, I see, I tried. Um, under swimming? Yes, thank you. Under swimming Clara Samco qualified for states in the 50 freestyle. Um, she will be uh swimming at the state finals on November 18th at Webster High School, so good luck to Clara. And cross-country, uh, the Mahal's, uh, cross-country Mahal's competition is this Thursday at one o'clock at the Hudson Valley Sports Dome. And the cross-country, front country sectionals is on November 2nd, so that's next Wednesday at 10:00 AM. Uh, the boys race and then the girls um will be at noon, uh both at Bear Mountain State Park. So, good luck to all those athletes. And in addition, the past couple of weeks on campus with all our fall sports, um each of the sports have recognized their seniors. So um, thank you to the seniors and good luck to them um as they finish up their fall season sports.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so um, thank you all for all of your hard work, we really appreciate it. Love that the kids are getting back to what we'll call some sense of typical. Um, one of the things that uh the board, based on feedback that we have received, public comments, um, et cetera. Um, we are working with Ms. Breran and we are looking to put together an ad hoc committee for diversity, equity and inclusion. So this committee, we will come up with a charge for the committee. Um, the committee will consist of Ms. Breran, um, board members and some staff. Meg, is that like administrators and staff?
We're open.
We're open, so could be parents, um, hold on one sec. Um, so this way, um, once we have the charge, we'll let everyone know what the charge is. Uh, but the board is in agreement that this ad hoc committee um is something that is um necessary. Okay, is everyone?
Is that based on what happened with the homecoming? Is that what precipitated it?
So, um, what, what precipitated it? I think that it is a um partly maybe, but for, for the board of education um and the superintendent, these are difficult conversations and uncomfortable conversations to have. Um, uh, Ms. Breran is very good at making sure we do it the right way. Um, and we just wanna have a committee so that we look at everything appropriately.
Makes no sense. It does no sense.
You know, and, and make sure that we're doing it timely, we're doing it correctly and we're doing it in a way that people understand. You don't necessarily have to like everything we do. Um, it's important for us to do what's very best for our staff and our students. Um, we just have to make it clear and everyone understands.
So the children will be on that, the students will be on that, can do this well at some point.
Maybe, at some point. Right now, it is not going to involve students.
Is there any members of the public that are part of the committee?
So, um, Ms. Breran just said that people are, she's just open to that. Um, we just wanna keep it at an adult level for now, okay? Um, I will take one last question, but this isn't like a question and answer type of meeting. I think I've been very um good about that. So, last question and, and I may or may not be able to answer it.
I'd love to get involved right away, so.
We will be.
You know how to get a topic beat.
So, so understood. Um, the way the ad hoc committee works is Ms. Breran will get a charge from the superintendent and then who by the.
And who charges.
What it needs to do and accomplish.
The purpose, the purpose of the committee.
The purpose, thank you.
So I'll write up a purpose, um, work with Ms. Breran about it, and there'll be information.
Yeah, and we can definitely, we will reach out for participants, okay?
So Dawn, I know, I know you said no requests, but I was curious, I asked for follow-up on the last meeting.
And you're gonna get it. Uh-huh, uh-huh, no, that's all right. I could really have to change the meeting a little bit, so everyone wants like, we love you, you're coming, but you know, it's hard.
We need like a ball that you can just like throw around the room.
I will not throw, I will not throw anything in a meeting.
It's like a different ball.
Um, Ms. Ha, are you ready? Thank you.
Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the first reading of policy seventeen forty, relationship with non-public schools as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? This is the first reading, um, this is not an adoption. So if you have any comments to make for our newer board members, if you have any comments or changes to make, um, you would want to either talk about them now or send them to this guy. Okay, um, all those in favor? Any opposed? Next meeting, can we have second reading and adoption, please? Thank you.
Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the first reading and adoption of policy sixty seven forty-one, contracting for professional services as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the excess from the technology department as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Can I just add a comment to this?
Of course.
Thank you. Just so that um the board is aware, we're looking into selling these separately um for accessing them. However, if we're not able to go through that path, we also have another company which we go through, which is E-Race, and then they pay us per pound for them. So just so you know, we do get revenue back from that.
We know, we're gonna, we're gonna charge them.
We can't do it that way. We either have to sell the whole lot or we go through E-Race.
Ms. Breran, one more.
Oh, sorry. I already crossed it off, so to me, it happened.
Um, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve textbook adoption request for AP chemistry as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Sure, of course.
Um, just because I'm not completely combed out with the process that was used to vet this textbook, could you just give us a little bit of background?
Sure, this is an AP course, so the AP college course gives us a selection of textbooks that align with their AP framework and they suggest that our course align with those. So they give us a listing of that, the teacher who did, who's taught it, compared it from the old book that we used to use that does not align with the new AP framework and said this is the one that they recommended, it was the highly recommended one. So therefore, we fill out the textbook adoption form, we go through the pricing, make sure we can get out the state contract, all of those pieces. And that's why you have the opt fifteen books in front of you.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Breran, now you, now you're really up. Um, so Ms. Breran's first presentation, this is in reference to um some comments that were made at the last board meeting, correct? Is that the presentation?
Yes. I can stand, that's okay.
Of course.
So I'm gonna do my, my best here to kinda just give a brief overview, but um also keep in mind that as Ms. Breran just shared, that there, there is the request for this ad hoc, ad hoc board committee um so that we can get further into some details and share more information. So one of the things that I kinda just wanna focus on, you can see here in the title, is that I, I just kinda wanna shift the language that we're using here, which is in line with New York State Ed, which is really what we're talking about is culturally responsive sustaining education. So what is that other than a mouthful of words to say and in short, we call it CRS. Um, but really what this is, is education that's drawn from decades of research uh that recognizes cultural differences, including racial, ethnic, linguistic, gender, sexuality and ability, and that they should be treated as assets for teaching and learning. But what does that actually mean for our classrooms, our students, and what does that look like in our, in our schools and our buildings? Um, so to pare it down, really what it means, this culturally responsive education is about teaching the students that are sitting in front of you. Who are your students? What do we need to know about them, what their experiences are, um, where they come from in order for us to form the most meaningful relationships that we can with our students? Because what we can all agree upon is that those relationships that we build with our, our students is what we know is what brings us our greatest success with our students, their academic success and anything else that they um, they, they endeavor in their educational careers. So I'm gonna try and draw some connections to the culturally responsive sustaining education and NYU, which is what was brought up at the last meeting, as trainers that we're using for some of our professional development right now. So it might kinda feel a little bit disjointed because this is work that's been going on for uh an extended period of time as well as new work that we're, we're kind of uh in, approaching on currently that some people are responding to. So one of the connections that I wanna make here is that New York State Ed in 2018 pushed out a framework of guidelines for culturally responsive sustaining education, essentially giving school districts and public education in New York State the framework and guidelines for what is expected for us to be doing in our schools, how we should be approaching this work, what that should look like. The connection that I wanna make to NYU is that New York State Education contracted directly with NYU. This work is, is uh very much entrenched in NYU's research, um, their work. And it is, it is their work that drafted the guidance document that New York State Ed uses. So that's just the connection that I want us to make as to why we work with NYU and how we, we uh came upon them. I'll talk a little bit more about um the different ways that we're utilizing them. In an effort for time, I'm not gonna click on it, but that link there is the document. So if you go onto, and I highly recommend, um, for many of you that are here, you have questions and you really wanna get a better understanding, I highly recommend that you go on to newyorkstateed.gov, NICEed.gov and you type in culturally responsive, um, or just, you can just even start with cultural, it'll lead you to this document. It's very lengthy, it's a sixty-four page document, uh, but it really does give a lot of information and uh I think it would clear up a lot of the, the questions that, that the community and, and families and so on have. So I, I really do recommend um looking at that document. I, we can probably even just post it right on our website so that there's.
We will, we'll post it.
Um, but I do highly recommend if you're looking at it, it would just be a, a lot of time to go through sixty-four pages of that. Um, oh, sorry. Just one of the other things that I wanted to point and has been brought up tonight and that I think is just important to remember, that policy is very much a part of this. And so, um, there is an expectation through uh NICED, the Board of Regents and through ESSA that the bullets that you see there are areas that all of these stakeholders are considering developing, reviewing uh policies for. So this is all work that is expected of school districts and all of the stakeholders that you see there. I did again, I included some links, just if this is posted somewhere and people wanna click on. Those are the links to um our district specific board policies around diversity, equity and inclusion that we adopted, I believe, two years ago. Okay? Um, so like trying to make an additional connection and understanding our work specifically with NYU. Again, lots of words, very lengthy, but in short, we call them NYU Metro Center. So about fifteen years ago, uh, again, New York State Ed contracted with and uh grant-funded NYU to do um research and develop a technical assistance center on disproportionality for New York State schools. And that's referred to as TACTI, in case you're ever here somewhere. Um, so we worked very closely with TACTI as a district that was cited in disproportionate suspensions for students with disabilities. Um, we and several other school districts in the Hudson Valley and all throughout New York State worked very closely with their process, procedures, systems analysis, data analysis to review our own practices and uh look at what, what we were doing, what was happening that we were being, uh, we were disproportionately suspending students with disabilities. So over the last um few years during, during COVID, uh through COVID, um, we had brought them on. We again were cited in this area and so we worked very closely with them and their professional development and the state review uh to again look at our root cause analysis, our data. Uh, through that self-review, I can say that we have been successful in remaining off of uh the citation and we have not been cited for disproportionate suspensions since our work right now, um, that ended specifically around this in 2020. Um, and so just the need for collaboration, there, there are so many, as, as you can hear just through our discussions and through our building reports and board reports, there are so many things that are going on in the district, so many uh regulations, expectations that we are trying to manage and that all this work that we're talking about um with the culturally responsive sustaining education, it's a big lift. And so there's, there's a lot that we need to partner with, we need to um kind of check in with and uh it, it really requires us to have additional collaboration as we move through this. Just what I spoke about, um, some of the reasons that I just listed there, but our, our citations, our work on the DCSIP, um, continued work in response to our climate survey that we just reviewed a couple meetings ago and focus groups that we're looking really to put together for community members and different stakeholders to be able to share their voices and experiences that we're really getting a true, full, uh, grounded experience and, and voices of this all. So. Oh, no, this doesn't show up. This doesn't show up, so. Okay, so I have some surveys here, there, there is some survey responses. So, um, and like I said, we had done work with NYU previously through TACTI and through the state in our, in our review around the disproportionate suspensions. Um, but as we continue some of this work around the CRFs that I was just referring to, we also wanted to just um stop and think and, and revisit, is there someone else that we wanna utilize? And so we pulled together a focus group to re. And so we pulled together a focus group to review different consultants, um, that we may consider and utilize in this work. Uh, that group had a variety of stakeholders on it that met with, um, each of the consultant groups, interviewed quite extensively each group, met with, had conversations with. Um, what you can't see are some of the just sample survey responses that I had pulled. Um, but the first one was.
Okay.
Is it? Uh, so this was, which group did we think would be most helpful in, um, it does match, yes, I'm not matching. Uh, with setting goals, um, and the ability to achieve them. So in blue is, is one of the consultant agencies that we were meeting with. Red is the second one, and that gold color or orange color is NYU. Um, so you can see there that they were selected by our focus group. Uh, we also talked about who we thought would be best for our professional development. Again, the selection was NYU. And overall, which one would be, who we want to work with. And one of the, one of the main responses that we got from the focus group is NYU's familiarity with New York State education and New York State regulations. And so that, that really played, um, tied in greatly. So as far as next steps, again, Ms. Stanley, you've already kind of addressed this. We, um, have asked and requested for a subcommittee group for full transparency. Um, we, we hear the, the need. There's certainly nothing that we're looking to, to hide or not share. We think that it would be really important for us to have this, um, subcommittee so that as we go through all of the different initiatives or professional development that we're doing in this area, any of the work, um, it is, it is all being presented and shared with the community, shared with the board. Um, and as we continue to adjust and make our way through this work so that we can take the feedback from, from all stakeholders that are that are here. And just lastly. There you go. Apparently I had to go ahead of it and then come back. So lastly, you know, I just, I just wanted to kind of bring it to a close by going through the four principles. Again, this is from New York State Education. Their four principles for CRS are on the left. And you can see how closely they tie in with our district vision, mission, and values. Um, and again, tying it all back together, that this is all work that stems from NYU, their research and their decades worth of work that they've done in this area, and the reason that we're collaborating with. Thank you. Board, do you have any questions, comments?
Um, I, I saw Meg at first. I just really thought I got every question. Will this presentation can, can help you share with the board?
Absolutely.
Alright, great. That was it. NISA, that's great. Carolyn?
Meg, I know you mentioned that we're, uh, we've been working with NYU for, for many years, and they have their trainers that come here. Um, so how, and I know this is really where the question has lied with the public, how can we ensure that trainers' personal beliefs are not brought in? Are you physically involved with reviewing of the lessons or curriculums prior to trainings?
Yes. So, um, that is important to note. So, uh, but we have pre-meetings before every session with the trainers from NYU in which we vet every material that they're going to be used, we vet every slide they're going to show. We have conversations, we give guidance around things we may want tweaked or a little bit different, or omitted, or added, how we can personalize it to our district. Um, so all of those, those conversations happen in pre-planning meetings. So there's nothing, there are no surprises during the sessions, as well as, um, myself, Nicole, Dr. Wade, not Dr. Wade, no, wait, wait, Dr. Morgan. Dr. Morgan, we're, we're present at them, um, so we're, we're sitting in on all of the, uh, the sessions as well. So there's nothing that we are not a part of, that we're not, not only are we vetting prior to, but we're in, in the midst of, uh, the sessions we're running at home as well.
In the readings, we, we, we review the readings prior to the presentation. And as, uh, Meg said, um, you can access, there's full transparency. The culturally responsive and sustaining education is on SAE's website. This is what it's based on.
Um, yes, Nicole?
I can just say, a major part of this, and because I work for another school district, I'm familiar with it, um, is getting to know and understand where your kids are coming from. Not so much necessarily teaching them one thing or another, but it's really about how to get to know your kids and their backgrounds and their culture, where they're coming from, and how to develop relationships. So like you said, it's a lot more of building relationships with our kids, because research has shown that's the factor in whether or not they actually make after bringing kids.
That's exactly what it is. That's what the, the, um, lessons are.
And it's used in many other districts, um, you know, throughout New York State. I think I read through the document, I just wanna say, I think it's phenomenal. Um, and I think it's really about it, building relationships with our kids, getting to know them, understanding what they connect to so that we can help them reach their potential. When kids don't feel like you understand them, like them, it, they, even you could be the best teacher in the world, but there's a wall. And so we're trying to break that wall, right, you know, and break that wall down so that we can help our kids. I think that that's, it's less about us to putting, pouring something in their heads, right, and us trying to get them out there.
Any other comments?
I know I felt a little more briefly, you said that you reviewed the curriculum content before it goes out, because having to, the comments that, you know, were publicly on Twitter or whatever, I said it was a little disconcerting. So, you know, as long as there's a monitor that that doesn't filter into the training, that, that was the key.
So that's a good point. And one of the, um, one of the, anyone have any other questions or comments? So one of the items that I think is important for the public to know, the board is going through an overview training in a, at a retreat. We're allowed two retreats a year. We are using one of the retreats to, um, have this reviewed. Uh, we think it's a great opportunity to really understand what is going on. Um, and we are also, um, we've also, um, found out from Ms. Breran, she co-facilitates, as, as well as other people. So, um, every single training session is on. Um, so we are, um, do, we believe with NYU and what they know and what they bring to the table. Um, as a board, we approve this. Um, we've been working with them for years. I attended the fir- very first session, um, for the first day. I, I think I did great.
You did. You passed.
I passed. I was, I, I passed. Um, but it was a great session. So, um, I do want the public to know that we heard you. Um, the board wants you all to know that we heard you, and this is, it is, it is being closely monitored. And we are, um, building this ad hoc committee from many items, so we think it's gonna be great.
And it is all about transparency and communication, just as, as, um, people have been asking about, that this is an opportunity to do that.
Absolutely. We good?
Can I make an announcement after the recording?
Of course.
Um, we're having difficulty live streaming today's video. Um, however, we are recording it, so as soon as we're done, they will upload it to our website. So we apologize, we're not sure what the error is, but we will upload the recordings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's unfortunate.
Second.
Probably. Um, okay, um, Ms. Breran, you want to continue?
Oh, yes, I have the other session. Uh, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the agreement between the Roundup Valley Central School District and John Neiman effective November first, two thousand twenty-two through November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. I need to look up one of the lessons.
John Neiman is?
Who? She's the facilitator for Board in Hillingham. This is our, our session for Level Two. So the same group that went through Level One is now going through Level Two.
And is that our reading teacher, specialized teacher?
This, this specific training is comprised of specialized teachers. There are some reading teachers in there, um, as well as a couple of the data service providers.
That's wonderful. Thank you for, for bringing this to round out its place. An excellent reading for round and end of the round.
Any other comments, feedback? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Uh, last one. Recommended motion to accept the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education and Committee on Preschool Special Education to authorize the arrangement of the special education programs and services for the students as presented.
I'll make the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. So I've been practicing. Ms. Ariana. Did I get it right?
Ariana.
Ariana. So, no. You know, I'm trying. I just. I'm so close, so close.
Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the revised personal report recommended by Dr. Joseph Morgan, superintendent at school, as presented.
I'll make the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Couple introductions.
Of course.
Um, Paige Ramirez is in the house, um, we're a specialized teacher at high school. Uh, we sit in front of her, Peter Marsh. Special education, education. Special education at junior high school.
Nice. Okay, great. Welcome to the board. Russ Hadford.
Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the budget transfer to one that HRA and HSA for staff as prevented.
I'll make the motion. Any discussion? Oh, wait, just a second. Thanks, I was like rushing through that one, right? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Um, we're gonna do the second one. I just wanna give a quick update with Emery about the, um, transportation contract. Um, so I just put a few slides together. Uh, we've been in contact with first student. This is your five-year contract. So after this year, we have to, um, make a next step. So our two options are to extend, uh, one-year extension with first student at CPI. Uh, and then the second option would be to go out to bid on RFP, uh, to look for a new transportation contract, which could potentially be for a student as well. Uh, so that's why I put on the agenda the, um, the consent, uh, agreement for help with bid and RFP process. Um, but this, the slide just kind of give a little background on each option. Um, so right now, we've talked to first student a couple of times, with Dr. Morgan, Emery, and myself. Uh, we're kind of, we're just waiting for a little bit more information from them uh, before we make a decision, and obviously that's to the board. Uh, and then also, we're talking with, um, our attorney as well to kind of make sure we're, um, you know, looking in the right direction, have all the information so we can put that into the board. Is there any questions on that?
Any questions? We're good?
Okay, so. Uh, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the bid slash RFP development proposal for student transportation through our two paths as presented.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm gonna provide.
Thank you, board.
I'm gonna provide the next two.
Yep.
Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the surplus from junior high school and high school as prevented.
I'll make the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommended motion that the Board of Education accept the financial reports for August twenty twenty-two as prevented.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Cass Levine. Did I do it?
She does.
You don't have it. Okay. Um, okay, so recommended motion to adjourn tonight's October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two board meeting. I'll make the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Be safe out there. If anyone has a question that they didn't ask during the meeting, feel free.